The legislature is back in session. Senator Slavikstein, you will recognize her?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good evening to my colleagues. I move to place Bill 70-38 COR in the third reading phone. I wish to discuss the measure.
You can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Bill 70-38 is an act to add and use subsection 3135 to Article 1, Chapter 3, Title 17 Guam Code, and relative to authorize the Guam Department of Education to lease property within its jurisdiction. And was introduced by myself along with co-sponsors, Vice Speaker Tony Ada, Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Vince Bora, Senator Chris Drenas, Senator Sabrina Salas Montanani, and Senator Shelley Cavill. Bill 70 is one that empowers the Guam Department of Education with the ability to lease property within its jurisdiction. This legislation is straightforward and is in its intent, but far-reaching in its potential to help strengthen our education system and serve our community for years to come by turning underutilized or unoccupied school properties into possibilities for advancement, sustainability, and reinvestment in our educational system. Twenty years ago, Public Law 2367 was enacted to authorize the Board of Education to establish a fee schedule that each school may use to rent out part of the facilities for community use. This would allow for outside groups to use the gymnasium or cafeteria for a variety of uses for a day. The bill, however, will authorize DOE to execute longer-term leases of unused or underutilized properties. Every dollar generated from these leases will help to repair leaking roofs, plumbing, upgrades to classrooms, and provide better learning environments for our students. In addition to the authorization, this measure creates a procurement team consisting of seven members, including representatives in the Guam Board of Education and GDE to execute the process for approving leases. I thank the good chairman and the committee on education for this amended version, which includes language that leases should be at least 90% of the appraised value of the property. Mr. Speaker, the revenue earned by these leases will not go into the general fund. Instead, it will go into the fund separate and apart from the general fund requiring approval by the Board of Education to expand funds that will be reinvested directly into our schools where it is most needed. This is about embracing innovation to solve longstanding problems and provide our educators and administrators with the tools they need to create a better future for the next generation. While it may not fully fund and address all the maintenance needs, it will help provide additional resources to help our schools thrive. So for our students, our schools, and the challenges in public education in Guam, I humbly ask for your support. Jesus Massey, Mr. Speaker. And I have three amendments I'd like to proffer for my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to proffer an amendment. And this amendment is proffered on behalf of our colleague Senator Tina Munya Barnes. This amendment on line 11, page 2, is simply to change the procurement team membership from the current five members of the Education Board to three, along with the superintendent and chief financial officer. This will assist the department make sound decisions when discussing the leases provisions in an effort to get the biggest return on such lease. I ask for your support of my colleagues to pass this amendment. Jesus Massey. That's the first one.
On the amendment, it's on line 6 to 12, page 2. Is that the one? To amend...
That's correct.
Okay. On the amendment to amend subsection 3135A of the bill. General Lady from Tumuningia recognize?
Jesus Massey, Mr. Speaker. I have a question to the author of the amendment. Why change this? Why change it?
She just asked that it be reduced from seven to five, or from five to three.
With no justification or no reason?
It's just to reduce the number of folks so that they don't get caught with the quorum requirements that when you have so many members that establish quorum, that's invocation of their existence.
Mr. Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to ask the question. And I just have one other question on this amendment. The reason for the superintendent and the designated representative, chief financial, and then three from the Board of Education. It's less than the seven that was provided in the original legislation. What are the other two that were left behind? Or, okay, so it was five members of the board, I see. It's okay, I answered my own question. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You're welcome. On the amendment, on the amendment, anybody wishing to speak on the amendment? Any objections to the amendment? You want us to close on your amendment, sir? Okay. Any objections to the amendment? No objections, so ordered. Senator Slavikstein, you still have the floor?
I have two other amendments to proffer on behalf of Senator Chris Drenas, but I'm just looking if everybody's got a copy of it and if I ask the Sergeant Arms if they can make sure they provide copies to everyone first.
You want to go ahead and dispose of the amendment that we all have right now and then we'll get to buy one when we get here? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
If we can...
Let's take a minute recess.
Thank you.
Legislature is back in session. Senator Slavikstein, you still have the floor?
Mr. Speaker, thank you, Mr. Speaker. This amendment is proffered on behalf of Senator Chris Drenas. It's on line 18 to 20, page 2. We're adding the language at the end of the word "execute," except when the prospective leasing is an educational institution or government agency, provided that the lease for said prospective leasing requires cash rent payments. This amendment will achieve several things. First, ensure equity among those that make a profit and those who don't. I agree that companies should pay a rental rate that considers the revenue it will generate. While I want to help DOE, I also want to ensure that schools and agencies that don't make profits are not subject to the higher rate. Another is that GDE is still empowered. I also want to point out that the exemption only applies a ceiling to GDE. Nothing in this amendment will stop GDE from asking 50, 75, or even 80% of the appraisal value if they feel it is in the best interest of the department to do so. Today, we are forward-thinking. This exemption will not only help Sifa negotiate a new home for its foreigner students and families, but will also solidify a policy-making for all schools and agencies. And lastly, we ensure there is no free rent. This amendment prevents a rent-free sweetheart deal by requiring any leasing negotiated under this exemption require cash payments. I ask for my colleagues' support for this amendment.
Senator Slavikstein, there are two amendments here that identify line 18 to 20, page 2.
Yes, and if I'm correct, one is at 6:04 PM and one is 6:39 PM, and I read out the 6:04 PM.
I got 7:04 PM.
7:04? I only have two.
Let's take a minute recess so we can resolve this.
Mr. Speaker, stand corrected. The amendment is at 7:04 PM.
So which one are you dealing with?
The 7:04 PM.
You want to deal with the 7:04 PM first?
First, yes.
Do you have the 7:04 PM? Senator Barnett? CMD, CMD. Okay, got it? You can proceed, sir. We're back in...
I already read the amendment. Do you want me to read it again? I mean, it addresses the amendment.
No.
I can read it over again one more time?
Waste your life, but go ahead.
Okay, I'll go ahead one more time. All right, thank you, Mr. Speaker. This is proffered on behalf of Senator Chris Drenas. The amendment is identified at 7:04 PM, okay? On line 18-20, page 2, we're adding the language at the end of the word "executed," except when the prospective leasing is an educational institution or government agency, provided that the lease for said prospective leasing requires cash rent payments. This amendment still achieves several things. First, ensuring equity among those that make a profit and those who don't. I agree that companies should pay a rental rate that considers the revenue it will generate. While I want to help DOE, I also want to ensure that schools and agencies that don't make a profit are not subject to the higher rate. Another is that GDE is still empowered. Also want to point out that this exemption only applies a ceiling to GDE. Nothing in this amendment will stop GDE from asking 50, 75, or even 80% of the appraisal value if they feel it is in the best interest of the department to do so. Today, we look forward, we are forward-thinking, correction. This exemption will not only help Sifa negotiate a new home for its foreigner students and families, but will also solidify a policy-moving forward for all schools and agencies. And lastly, that there is no free rent. This amendment prevents a rent-free sweetheart deal by requiring any leasing negotiated under this exemption require cash payment. I ask for my colleagues' support on this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Slavikstein. On the amendment, on the amendment, is there anybody wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator from Baragada, you recognize me?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just have a point of inquiry to the proffer, well, the representative of the proffer of the amendment. So when I'm reading this, it looks like DOE can accept less than 90% of the appraised value. Is that correct? If the prospective leasing is an educational institution or government agency, provided that they're going to pay cash so they can go below the 90% appraised value, is that correct? Because that's how it reads to me.
That's correct.
So I guess the follow-up question is, how much lower are we looking at? Is it like $1 rent? Because right now, there's no bottom.
You know, as I read the amendment, GDE, nothing is stopping them from asking for 50, 75, or 80% of the appraisal value if they feel it is in the best interest of the department to do so. I leave that to the department in this case to decide what percentage, if it's a school institution or an align agency or an agency, government Guam agency.
Did I answer your question, Senator? Okay. On the amendment, on the amendment, anybody wishing to speak on the amendment? General Lady from Jonya, you recognize? General Lady from Jonya.
I thought you said Tumuningi.
Previgin, ma'am, previgin.
All right. This amendment concerns me because while the proffer said it would not allow for a sweetheart deal, it would not, it would still give value to DOE, it really does not provide that. It says everybody's going to be required to pay 90% of the appraised value, except if it's an educational institution, any educational institution or government agency. And that's really, and that they have to pay cash. They could pay cash $1, and that's it. And I don't think that we need to be giving away GDE facilities because if they can't lease it out, then we should find another use for it, do something else. And I think that we are going to end up with, like, creating more issues than we're trying to solve here. We're trying to get them some money so that they can improve all their other facilities. They're giving up the use of this one. They need to get revenue. If this is what we're going to allow them to do, then it should be a revenue-making venture so that they can do what they need to do, which is maintain their properties. Or we're going to have more schools broken down, unable to be used. We're going to have more double sessions, and it's really not going to make sense to the public that their students are in public session when another educational institution can make perfectly good use of this, another middle school, in fact, can make perfectly good use of another, of this facility. So I just think that's, that, I don't know, I'm going to object to this amendment just because I don't think it gives GDE value, and I think that's what they need right now. They need money, they need to do maintenance, they need to take care of their schools as well, and I don't think it's, should be their business to be giving things away. They need, if they were going to allow them to do this at all with their facilities, otherwise they should use them for schools, for their own schools, and take care of our students. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, on the amendment, are there any other senators wishing to speak on this amendment? Senator Slavikstein, you should like to close on the amendment, there is an objection.
No need. We'll just proceed. The vote of the body.
On the amendment, there is an objection to this amendment. All those in favor of this amendment, please indicate by raising your hands. Amendment fails. Mrs. Senator Slavikstein, you still have the floor, sir?
All right, thank you, Mr. Speaker. The amendment now is, I'll be proffering is on behalf of Senator Chris Drenas again, and the time is 6:39 PM. and the time is 6:39 PM. This amendment on page 2, line 18-20, is to add a letter C1 to read, "If the leasing is a charter school approved to operate by the Guam Academy Charter School Council pursuant to 17 Guam Code annotated, Chapter 12, subsection 12106, or an agency of the government of Guam, leasing payments may be derived from legislative appropriation or existing funds available to expend for rental expenses. For many years, we hear of organizations getting free rent on the facilities they utilize. This amendment will ensure that there is peace of mind. This amendment is about giving GDE and taxpayers the peace of mind that any lease negotiated with a charter school or agency will be paid. We will get rid of the red tape by allowing appropriation or available funds to be pledged. We are helping to simplify the process and can even address lease payments through legislation like the budget law. By this, we are ensuring our promises are kept. At the heart of this change is to make sure these financial commitments are honored, and that DOE is not owed money because the tenants decide to pay other obligations instead. Pledging appropriations will mean those funds are guaranteed to GDE. I ask for my colleagues' support on this amendment, and thank you, Mr. Speaker."
Thank you, sir. On the amendment, on the amendment, any senator wishing to speak on this amendment? General Lady from Zonia, you recognize?
This amendment, I like the idea that they are going to be able to make their payments out of the funds that the government of Guam gives to the charter schools. That way, we're not going to end up with charter schools being sued, and the government and the government of Guam being put on the, you know, in, as part of that debate or that lawsuit, that they are also liable for the unpaid bills of charter schools. And so, and I, I agree with the proffer of the amendment, that the last thing we want is for GDE to be waiting for payments for something that they have counted on, as the bill proposes, for their own maintenance. That would just be a complete fail for us. So, so I, I like this, and I hope that those who are involved in the procurement actually make it stricter, and that they, it's not may, but they shall be derived, and that means GDE is paid first, and everything else can be paid next, if they're going to be using GDE facilities. Sidozmasi. Or maybe I'll just make that amendment, instead of may be derived, it says, whatever mind, I'm going to leave that, that's we have to the board. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. On the amendment, gentleman from Zonia, you recognize?
Buenos noches to the people of Guam, and thank you for watching us this evening. I hope you had a good dinner. Mr. Speaker, I certainly want to say I support this amendment, but I support it more than I supported the one that was just voted down by the body, specifically because it establishes the floor that my good friend from Baragata was mentioning, a minimum of 90% of the appraised value of the property at the time such lease is executed. And I support this, because the entire intent of the bill and this effort to allow GDE to lease its properties is so that we can generate real revenue, that is going to be so much more valuable in light of all the cuts and the potential tax breaks being entertained by the body. So, sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to give my comments on this amendment.
Thank you very much, sir. On the amendment, General Lady from Tumuning, you recognize, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I just have a question to the author of the amendment, or who's proffering it for the author. In this section, that's double underlined, if the leasing is a charter school approved to operate by the government, by the Guam Academy Charter Schools Council pursuant to 17 Guam Code annotated, Chapter 12, 12106, which is basically the approval of charter schools, or an agency of the government of Guam. So my question is, or an agency of the government of Guam? That means public health, that means anybody within the government of Guam. Yet, there's no approval for that, for that one, only with the approval of a charter school, which pursuant to, you know, Chapter 12, but, or any agency of government of Guam. Why, why is it not fair? I mean, if, if the charter schools must be approved first in order for, to lease this property, why don't we require the same for a government of Guam agency?
No, that's, uh...
So I'm not, you know, can I take a one-minute recess, just to consult with counsel, to ensure that's, if there's anything?
One-minute recess.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, just for my colleagues' information, I mean, you know, the confusion I had here is in an agency of the government of Guam. Even though the charter schools must be approved as a charter school in order to, you know, purchase or lease, lease the school from DOE, it talks about an agency of the government of Guam, and yes, it could be public health, it could be GPD, it could be any agency within the government of Guam. And it talks about that agency, agency having to have funds from the legislature or existing funds available expended for rental. Okay, like anything, when you go into a procurement, you got to prove that there's funding available. It's not like something, okay, here's our wish list, you know, and later on, I'm going to go get the money. You know, the, before any procurement, you need to show that you have the funds in existence in order to move forward. So other than that, I thank the author of the amendment for allowing me to discuss with his staff and to Leon Guero to, to get the information straight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, any other senators wishing to speak on the amendment? General Lady from Baragata, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just have a question regarding to the proffer of the amendment. So if you were saying agency of the government of Guam, does that exclude the legislative branch? And should any one of our offices be interested in renting office space? Would this not include us?
Mr. Speaker, I don't, I don't believe it excludes us. We're a government agency, who just happened to be at one of the branches of government.
Did I answer your question, ma'am?
Yeah, I just think maybe perhaps so, you know, we can change the verbiage, because agency, you know, has more of a specific meaning, perhaps entity of the government of Guam, that kind of expands it a little bit more. So if I can make that amendment to the amendment, as well as, so section 12106, I know that particular section is dealing with the approval, approval or denial, but if we just encapsulate the whole Guam, 17 Guam Code annotated, Chapter 12, because there are some elements that are needed, that are tied to approval or denial, so such as the appeals process. So for instance, if an application is denied, but under appeals, it's accepted, you know, we want to make sure that it captures everything, so that's why I think we should strike that particular section, as well as change agency to entity.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and bifurcate that, okay? That amendment, if you will. So we'll take it as it comes here. You want to strike out subsection 12106?
Yes.
Because you just want to be all-inclusive of chapter, chapter 12?
Yes, uh, chapter 12 of 17, title 17, yes.
On the amendment to the amendment, Senator Shalagstein, you recognize?
Mr. Speaker, when you look at the 17 Guam Code, Chapter 12, that's referring to the charter school. The creation of a charter school, the approval of the charter school, then it comes to the body, part of the request for funding, when they get funding, then that's where we grab the money, DOE grabs the money and says, this is what the rent is, they can tap from them before they make any other obligation that one of my colleagues brought up, make sure they pay the rent before they spend the money elsewhere. That's, that's what the, uh, chapter 12 is about. It's about the charter school. The other part of the...
Understood. Senator, just for clarification, all she wants to do is strike out subsection 12106. She's going to keep in 17 Guam Code annotated, Chapter 12. She just wants to strike out that specific subsection?
No, that's part of the charter school, the 12106, that's why it's subsection 12 that's in the chapter? You want to strike that out? I mean, I'm going to have to object to that. I mean, I can understand her request, or an agency of Gov Guam. She wanted to be a Gov Guam entity. That's, that's more specific, 12106 is a different...
I know, that's why we bifurcated the amendment.
Okay, if it's to strike 12106, then I object to it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You're going to object to it?
Yes, if it's to 12106, yes.
Yes.
The other parts, I have no problem with.
Okay. Senator Tidew?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, as well, you know, I think of striking out that, because on chapter 12, 12106, clearly states in the title, "Process for approving or denying charter school petitions," you know, and, and it's important that that stays in there, because it just works together with the same chapter and the section.
Point of information.
All right, let's take a one-minute recess and clear this up. Let's lay you back in order. Senator Shalagstein?
Mr. Speaker, I'm going to go ahead and, and withdraw the objection to the 12106. I'm good, okay?
Yes, sir.
And my colleague would ask, why? Because there's another section further down, that if there is a denial, and it's challenged, you don't go back to 12106, you end wherever you end, further down. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Okay? On the amendment, on the amendment, any other senator wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Pierce, you want to go ahead and close it? There's no objection. Okay. On the amendment, no objections to the amendment? Motion carries. Now, the second part of this amendment. You want to repeat that, ma'am? Go ahead and, changing...
Yeah, so this second amendment, I would like to change the verbiage of agency to entity, because I want to also include the legislature, because there's a potential that we can rent offices, office spaces, and help support DOE.
On the amendment, to change the word agency to entity. Senator from Tumuning, ma'am, you recognize?
Just real quick, Mr. Chair, we just went ahead and put in the third reading file, file and area of an entity, you know, of the government of Guam, if it should pass, you know, to the ability for the public defender's office, if they should need that extra state, space or storage space, so I stand in full support of that. Thank you.
Thank you. On the amendment, to change the word agency to entity. Any senator? Any objections to the amendment? No objections, so ordered. Senator Pierce, you still have the floor, ma'am?
Yeah, I do, I like this amendment much better. This will definitely provide more resources and revenues for the government, for Department of Education, which is what, what I believe the purpose of this bill is for. Yeah, so I think that's, that's it. I support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. On the amendment as amended, on the amendment as amended, are there any senators wishing to speak on the amendment as amended? No one? Any objections to the amendment as amended? No objections, so ordered. Senator Shalagstein, you still have the floor, sir?
I have no other amendments to proffer for any of my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. On the... Thank you. On the bill as amended, on the bill as amended, any senator wishing to speak on the bill as amended? On the bill as amended, I have, still have amendments in my hand, nobody wants to speak to them, I'm gonna discard them. Senator Parrish, you're recognized, ma'am?
All right, so I'd like to proffer an amendment to add a new subsection D. I don't know what this is, doesn't have a file name to it, but it's basically states, GDOE shall develop a lease plan in consultation with Guam Economic Development Authority, Department of Land Management, Department of Administration, and other government entities prior to solicitation. So this amendment came about because of the, what was stated in the public hearing, in regards to how do we help GDOE get the best out of these leases? And how do we look out for the interest of GDOE, considering that their hands are full in trying to get schools, you know, operation of schools, and achieving the sanitary permits, right? And so GDOE does not necessarily have those expertise in-house, as far as property management. And so, you know, office space lease, for sure, you know, that's an opportunity, whether it's the government of Guam or other commercial business. But, you know, to have that economic lens, for GDOE to get more revenues, to help support their needs, you know, it's all, it helps to have that. In regards to Department of Land Management, there was a question that came up, because the facilities are under the jurisdiction of GDOE, but the land, we are not exactly sure, you know, it might be different, might be registered to different government Guam entities. For instance, you know, some schools might be, the land might be registered to CLTC, or the government of Guam as a whole. And so I think it's important to have that holistic knowledge about, let's say, the interest in regards to leasing these properties, as well as the opportunities. In regards to Department of Administration, I included them, because, you know, they actually were involved in such leasing of, to a agency, the Department of Public Health. So they were charging rent, in fact, to Department of Public Health. And so I know, we want to move towards having, moving our offices into government, in government properties. So maybe they have some expertise in that, and any agency, or any entity that can provide some sort of insight for GDOE to develop a more concerted, coordinated lease plan, because we want to make sure that they have, you know, an overall plan before they go out and start leasing, because the problem is if they're given discretionary power on a case-by-case basis. That's something I want to avoid, or have them avoid. You know, they might give their friends a lower lease, versus another entity, a higher lease, and that can open up a can of worms. So really, there should be more thought involved in, when it comes to leasing these GDOE properties, and so they, they can succeed. And I do support the concept of this bill, but I think there definitely are some gaps that need to be addressed, and this amendment aims to close one of those gaps, and I ask for my colleagues' support. Thank you.
Thank you. On the amendment, on page two, line 21, to add a new subsection D to the bill.
Mr. Speaker, I just have a question to the...
You recognize, Senator.
Question to the sponsor of this amendment, where it says that GDOE shall develop a lease plan prior to solicitation, it lists, you know, GIDA, DLM, DOA, but it also says other government entities. So you're saying that, you know, are you, what we don't want to do is say, what do you mean by other government entities, so that, you know, because again, you're saying that they shall develop a plan with these agencies, what you're saying, and other government entities. So are we saying that they cannot develop a, you know, lease plan without those three agencies, but what other government entities, just to get some clarification on what the intent was there?
Would the author of the amendment yield to the question?
So I do yield, but if I understand correctly, is the question about that it is restrictive, in that these agencies need to be consulted? Is that the question?
Is the question gonna be restrictive, or...?
Well, you're saying that they shall develop a lease plan, you list three agencies, but then you say, and other government entities prior to solicitation. So do we want to list out the other government entities, or do they get to decide what other government entities they shall consult with before developing a lease plan, is my question.
Does that clarify the question, ma'am?
Yes, so I don't want to be too prescriptive about which agencies, for instance, perhaps BSP, right? I didn't list BSP, but they are known as the planners of the government of Guam. So I mean, I'm open to changes in this amendment, for sure, but, you know, that's, I listed three agencies, because I knew that they could have enough insight. But if we wanted to stop there, or the language can be including but not limited to, that seems to be a language that is commonly used. So we wanted definitely, I definitely wanted to give GDOE the opportunity to seek assistance from agencies they think they, that would provide such assistance. So not to be overly prescriptive, but more suggestive, as far as who they can seek support from.
Did that answer your question, Senator?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the amendment, gentleman from Tallavo, you're recognized, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a question for the author of the amendment. How many agencies in the government currently have lease plans? Are we creating something that's gonna put them different than the rest of the government of Guam?
Would the author of the amendment yield to the question? Colleagues, as a reminder, please direct your inquiries to the chair.
Okay, I do yield to the question. And so really, the intent of this amendment was to address a concern that was brought up in the public hearing, as far as, you know, will GDOE get the best for its leases? And so that's really the intent behind that. My intent was to get the best amount of revenues for GDOE. And so the way to do it is to seek expertise from these agencies. So this isn't currently being done, from my understanding, from within the Department of Education, I think even within the government. I mean, I think this is a, if I'm not mistaken, a new step forward, which we need to look carefully and holistically. And that's what the intent of this amendment is to do. If it wasn't new, then we would already have the language in place. So I do appreciate any amendments to support this very important movement by our government. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, I'm just, I'm trying to understand the creation of lease plans. We have a number of government agencies, Mr. Speaker, that have mandates, that have leases, but none of them mandate, that I'm aware of, lease plans involving multiple agencies. And this would be different, and could impede the ability of the Guam Department of Education to in fact, come up with a lease. That's a, but thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to talk about the amendment.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, on the amendment, gentlelady from Tumuning, you're recognized? Okay. Gentlelady from Jony, you're recognized?
I like the idea of a lease plan, because it gives some parameters, where currently the bill gives no parameters. And it puts on GIDA, who's supposed to be the financial advisor of the entire government, and the expert at leasing property, to be able to share their expertise and their ideas for these, these properties that have really never been done before. Maybe they're going to help with valuation as well, because they've only been used as schools, but if they can envision other uses, then that might increase the value. And of course, the Department of Land Management, because of the issues the sponsor stated, and the Department of Administration, who is landlord as well, we found out recently, which was kind of a surprise, when we found out that they are the landlords of the Hessler Building. They leased it out to Public Health, I think now Department of Labor, and some other agencies. And I think the Department of Administration has also become the landlord of other properties that are not that clear, such as the Chancery, and some building in Tumuning, that I don't know where that is yet, and maybe five different properties that they purchased without any notice to the legislature, using ARP money. So they are now landlords of money. We have no idea who's supposed to be using those properties, or what they're supposed to be used for, except maybe the food kitchen, because they bought that one also, the... But when I asked DOE during the public hearing regarding this, like, what expertise do you have in this type of thing, and how are you going to do this, the superintendent's response was, oh no, we intend to hire a real estate agent to do all of this for us. And that was, that was their response. So that they would get, because I was asking, how are you gonna get good contract terms? How are you gonna know what provisions are gonna be put in there to protect you? And how are you gonna get a good deal? So that was their response, a real estate professionals, they're gonna hire one. So like I said, GIDA's supposed to be the expert for the government, so they might be able to do this. But I think them helping with a plan will still be helpful, even if GDOE in the end goes, goes and contracts with a real estate company or somebody else to do the actual mechanics of the leases, or the solicitations. It's not clear how this will be solicited, so I'm looking forward to that, too. It says, prior to solicitation, this is the first mention of a solicitation. The way the bill's written, it's not clear whether this has to be competitively solicited, or you can just do a one-on-one, hey, you want to lease my property, come here and let's make a deal. And that it just gets set like that. So, so I like the prior to solicitation part as well, just because it hints that there's going to be some type of competitive solicitation, according to how we normally do that. But, so again, I support the amendment and thank the author.
Thank you, Senator July. Senator Tigui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you know, I had some concerns, too, with the last part of the sentence, and other government entities. So I do have an amendment to the amendment, and if I can do it without, you know, having to write it out, it's very simple. So where it says, DOE shall develop a lease plan in consultation with Guam Economic Development Authority, Department of Land Management, Department of Administration, comma, and other government entities, and then this is where I put, as deemed necessary, prior to solicitation. So what I'm incorporating between after entities, as deemed necessary. This way, it doesn't look like, you know, they have to go to other government entities if they don't want to. So it's just giving them the ability to do it. So my amendment is as deemed necessary.
Thank you, Senator Tigui. On the amendment to the amendment, and that's to add the word after entities, comma, as deemed necessary.
Yes, and then continue on with prior to solicitation.
Prior to solicitation. Anyone who want to speak on the amendment to the amendment? Senator Parrish, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in full support of this amendment to the amendment, and thank you for clarifying this.
Thank you, Senator Parrish. Senator Tigui? Or any other senators want to speak on the amendment to the amendment? All right, Senator Tigui, you want to close?
No.
So any objections to the amendment to the amendment, here in CNN? On the amendment as amended. Speaker Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I appreciate the intent of the amendment here, but I think that there's enough ambiguity and vagueness in this thing that I can't support this, as much as I think. First off, the, you know, it starts with shall develop a lease plan. And, you know, it directs that nothing, it's not a may, it's a shall. Secondly, it says develop a lease plan. What is a lease plan? In consultation with the, with GIDA, Land Management, DOA, and other entities as deemed necessary, you know, it just adds an extra burden into this whole process, that you may never develop a plan. And, you know, who's to say, you know, that it is in compliance with a lease plan? Who's gonna, who's gonna approve that? So I think for the, well, I kind of figure, you know, what is trying to be the intent of the amendment, it's just, it's too vague and ambiguous, that it could, it could basically mean that any effort to be able to lease the facility, a facility with GDOE, can never get off the ground. Because if you're going to think of this for just one piece of property, that's fine. But when you're looking at multiple pieces, that the possibility of doing this, from multiple efforts, multiple possibilities of what it could be used for, it's almost like you're restricting, you know, what the facility can be used for, and restricting, further restricting, who can be eligible for it, which is gonna be counterproductive to anything that GDOE wants to be able to do with the property. So I have to respectfully object to this amendment. Mr. Speaker, thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker Blas. Anyone else on the Parrish amendment, amendment as amended? No one else? There's been an objection? So all those in favor of the amendment as amended? Sorry. Senator Parrish, you want to close on your amended, amendment as amended?
Yeah, and I understand what's maybe giving people misgivings, is the verbiage plan. What I really would like to see is more they develop, maybe the verbiage could be changed to parameters for leasing. So just like when we do solicitations, there's specifications. So I understand maybe the language could be changed, because, you know, again, what was stated at the public hearing was, we want to make sure that GDOE is taken care of, when we lease out these properties. What if they should need the prop, what if they should need the school back? And, you know, I know they're, they're looking to reduce or downsize, because of the enrollment has decreased significantly, which means there are facilities that most likely be vacant and available for leasing. But really, the intent of this, this amendment was to... But really, the intent of this amendment was to allow them, or they shall develop these parameters for leasing. So if there's an opportunity to make that change in this amendment, instead of develop a plan, but develop parameters for lease, parameters for leasing. I'd like to make the motion to substitute plan for parameters, parameters, lease parameters. So it's not as inflexible.
Why don't we take a moment's recess? Back in session. Senator Shonagstein, you're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules that we suspend the discussion until after Bill 48, which is the next bill, then we'll continue on.
Okay. On that motion, notwithstanding the House rules to suspend discussion on this bill, okay, and resume the discussion after we dispose of the next bill, which is Bill 48. Any objections? No objections? So ordered. Senator Boer, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to accept Bill Number 48-38 COR as amended by the Committee on Education, Libraries, and Public Broadcasting and substituted on the floor, introduced by myself, Senator Tina Rose Munia-Barnes, Senator Speaker Frank Blas Jr., Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Sabrina Salas-Metanani, Senator Shelley Cavill, Senator Jesse Luan, and Senator Joe S. Augustine, and act to add a new subsection 4132 of Article One, Chapter Four, Title Four Guam Code Annotated relative to authorizing limited leave benefits for retired teachers rehired on contract to fill teaching vacancies. And if I could speak on this motion, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, you first have to move to accept the substitute bill, right? Are you substituting the bill?
No. Are we?
Hang on. One minute recess.
Are you s- We're in recess?
Oh, we're in recess?
We're in recess. This one? No, no, yeah. Senator Boer? Senator Boer, I have two versions. Which one are we dealing with?
Substituted.
Okay.
His first motion was to accept the substituted version, so that's what you're going to call on the motion to accept. That was his first.
Okay.
I don't have your script.
That's him up. Hold on, I got it.
And then after that, he's going to move to the next.
Yes.
If they want to, if they want an explanation, they'll make it.
Sure. Okay, you ready? Good. Legislation back in order. Senator Boer, can you renew your motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to accept Bill Number 48-38 COR as amended by the Committee on Education, Libraries, and Public Broadcasting and substituted on the floor, introduced by myself, Senator Tina Rose Munia-Barnes, Senator Frank Blas Jr., Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Sabrina Salas-Metanani, Senator Shelley Cavill, Senator Jesse Luan, and Senator Joe S. Augustine, and act to add a new subsection 4132 of Article One, Chapter Four, Title Four Guam Code Annotated relative to authorizing limited leave benefits for retired teachers rehired on contract to fill teacher vacancies. And if I could speak on this motion, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, you first have to move to accept the substitute bill, right? Are you substituting the bill?
No. Are we?
Hang on. One minute recess.
Are you s- We're in recess?
Oh, we're in recess?
We're in recess. This one? No, no, yeah. Senator Boer? Senator Boer, I have two versions. Which one are we dealing with?
Substituted.
Okay.
His first motion was to accept the substituted version, so that's what you're going to call on the motion to accept. That was his first.
Okay.
I don't have your script.
That's him up. Hold on, I got it.
And then after that, he's going to move to the next.
Yes.
And if they want to, if they want an explanation, they'll make it.
Sure. Okay, you ready? Good. Legislation back in order. Senator Boer, can you renew your motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to accept Bill Number 48-38 COR as amended by the Committee on Education, Libraries, and Public Broadcasting and substituted on the floor, introduced by myself, Senator Tina Rose Munia-Barnes, Senator Frank Blas Jr., Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Sabrina Salas-Metanani, Senator Shelley Cavill, Senator Jesse Luan, and Senator Joe S. Augustine, and act to add a new subsection 4132 of Article One, Chapter Four, Title Four Guam Code Annotated relative to authorizing limited leave benefits for retired teachers rehired on contract to fill teacher vacancies. Okay, on the motion to accept substitute version, number 48-38 COR.
Mr. Speaker, can we get a copy of it? And then we can read it?
Okay, let's take a minute recess, get a copy of it. Legislation back in order. Sessions back in order. Senator Boer? On, okay, now that we've got the substitute version, there's a motion to accept the substitute version. Senator Parrish? On the motion?
Point of interest, we're comparing the amended with the substitute version, and I'm not seeing any difference. Is there, if they can, the sponsor can enlighten me on the change between the amended and the substitute version?
Senator Boer, would you like to be able to enlighten?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the change from the original version to the substituted version is on line, on page two, line seven. It was saying personal leave at the rate of 72 hours per pay period, which the correct version is 72 hours per school year.
Senator Parrish, that answer your question? It's just-
Mr. Speaker, and the reason why we had to do this was, the committee report and everything was correct. It was the actual document, PDF, that was submitted in the word document, that was not the correct version as part of the committee submission, which is why we needed to substitute it. So the committee report is correct, but not the actual attachments that were submitted. So we wanted to make sure we corrected that.
Understood. Senator Parrish, you recognize, actually, the change is only on page two, line seven.
Yeah, so it should read, if I'm not mistaken, per pay period or per school year?
Per school year.
Okay, yeah, so the amended version has that language as well. But, okay, thank you.
The amended version, the substitute version has per school year. I substitute it? We're talking about the substituted bill? Okay? Okay, on the motion to accept the substitute bill, any objections? No objections? So ordered. Senator Boer?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to place Bill Number 48-38 COR as amended by the Committee on Education, Libraries, and Public Broadcasting and substituted on the floor on the third reading file, and I'd like to discuss it.
You can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, earlier this year, the body passed legislation that authorized limited leave benefits for governor Guam retirees who return to service on a contractual basis. That policy laid the foundation for fairness and respect for those who choose to continue serving our island after retirement. Bill Number 48-38 builds on that framework by aligning it specifically with the Guam Department of Education's leave policy for permanent teachers. It recognizes the valuable role that retired educators continue to play in our schools and ensures that those who return to fill critical vacancies are afforded basic leave benefits similar to their peers. This measure authorizes the accrual of personal and sick leave for retired teachers on contract while maintaining guardrails to protect the integrity of our retirement system and our public finances. Leave accruals remain fixed, carryovers are limited, and no payouts or additional retirement credits are authorized. This is not about creating special treatment, it's about applying consistency in how we treat educators who are stepping up once again to serve. These teachers bring with them decades of experience and continue to mentor, lead, and stabilize our schools. The feedback during the public hearing was supportive from GDOE, the GDOE leadership, the Guam Federation of Teachers, and members of our education board. They all recognize the fairness and practicality of this bill, and I respectfully ask my colleagues to support me on this measure. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the bill, on the bill, General Lady from Timuining, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a question to the author of the legislation. He said he should yield.
What is your question?
So the question, Mr. Speaker, I have is on page two, number two, sick leave at the rate of four hours per pay period. Now, earlier, there was a bill that was passed, a good senator from Jotunya, Bill 50-38, and it said that, that bill says payments while being re-employed in the government of Guam shall occur sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam. So I was just wondering, what is the sick leave per pay period compared in this one, in his bill, compared to active employees of the government of Guam?
Are you willing to yield to the question, Senator Boer?
I don't know, the, you know, Mr. Speaker, the, you know, the proposal of this was based on what the current teachers accrue, because it's not necessarily, you know, at least the guidance from GDOE was that it's not the same. I don't know, and I could get that, get that answer from, for the Senator from Timuining if she, you know, we'd like to recess and I go find that out.
Senator from Jotunya?
Point of information, the law that was passed says, "Sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam. They shall accrue in the same manner as active employees." That's all it says.
Right.
One minute recess.
No.
Okay. On that motion, notwithstanding the House rules to suspend discussion on this bill, okay, and resume the discussion after we dispose of the next bill, which is Bill 48. Any objections? No objections? So ordered. Senator Bora?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a question to the author of the legislation. He said, if he should yield.
What is your question?
So, the question, Mr. Speaker, I have is on page 2, number 2, sick leave at the rate of four hours per pay period. Now, earlier, there was a bill that was passed, our good senator from Jotunya, Bill 50-38, and it said that, that bill says payments while being re-employed in the government of Guam shall occur sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam. So, I was just wondering, what is the sick leave per pay period compared, in this one, in his bill, compared to active employees of the government of Guam?
Are you willing to yield to the question, Senator Bora?
I don't know. You know, Mr. Speaker, the, you know, the proposal of this was based on what the current teachers accrue, because it's not necessarily, you know, at least the guidance from GDOE was that it's not the same. I don't know, and I could get that, get that answer from, for the senator from Timoting if she, you know, we'd like to recess, and I go find that out.
Senator from Jotunya?
Point of information, the law that was passed says, sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam. They shall accrue in the same manner as active employees. That's all it says.
One minute recess.
No.
Back in session. Senator Bora?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a question to the author of the legislation. He said, if he should yield.
What is your question?
So, the question, Mr. Speaker, I have is on page 2, number 2, sick leave at the rate of four hours per pay period. Now, earlier, there was a bill that was passed, our good senator from Jotunya, Bill 50-38, and it said that, that bill says payments while being re-employed in the government of Guam shall occur sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam. So, I was just wondering, what is the sick leave per pay period compared, in this one, in his bill, compared to active employees of the government of Guam?
Are you willing to yield to the question, Senator Bora?
I don't know. You know, Mr. Speaker, the, you know, the proposal of this was based on what the current teachers accrue, because it's not necessarily, you know, at least the guidance from GDOE was that it's not the same. I don't know, and I could get that, get that answer from, for the senator from Timoting if she, you know, we'd like to recess, and I go find that out.
Senator from Jotunya?
Point of information, the law that was passed says, sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam. They shall accrue in the same manner as active employees. That's all it says.
One minute recess.
No.
Back in session. Senator Bora?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a question to the author of the legislation. He said, if he should yield.
What is your question?
So, the question, Mr. Speaker, I have is on page 2, number 2, sick leave at the rate of four hours per pay period. Now, earlier, there was a bill that was passed, our good senator from Jotunya, Bill 50-38, and it said that, that bill says payments while being re-employed in the government of Guam shall occur sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam. So, I was just wondering, what is the sick leave per pay period compared, in this one, in his bill, compared to active employees of the government of Guam?
Are you willing to yield to the question, Senator Bora?
I don't know. You know, Mr. Speaker, the, you know, the proposal of this was based on what the current teachers accrue, because it's not necessarily, you know, at least the guidance from GDOE was that it's not the same. I don't know, and I could get that, get that answer from, for the senator from Timoting if she, you know, we'd like to recess, and I go find that out.
Senator from Jotunya?
Point of information, the law that was passed says, sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam. They shall accrue in the same manner as active employees. That's all it says.
One minute recess.
No.
Back in session. Senator Bora?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a question to the author of the legislation. He said, if he should yield.
What is your question?
So, the question, Mr. Speaker, I have is on page 2, number 2, sick leave at the rate of four hours per pay period. Now, earlier, there was a bill that was passed, our good senator from Jotunya, Bill 50-38, and it said that, that bill says payments while being re-employed in the government of Guam shall occur sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam. So, I was just wondering, what is the sick leave per pay period compared, in this one, in his bill, compared to active employees of the government of Guam?
Are you willing to yield to the question, Senator Bora?
I don't know. You know, Mr. Speaker, the, you know, the proposal of this was based on what the current teachers accrue, because it's not necessarily, you know, at least the guidance from GDOE was that it's not the same. I don't know, and I could get that, get that answer from, for the senator from Timoting if she, you know, we'd like to recess, and I go find that out.
Senator from Jotunya?
Point of information, the law that was passed says, sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam. They shall accrue in the same manner as active employees. That's all it says.
One minute recess.
No.
Back in session. Senator Bora?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a question to the author of the legislation. He said, if he should yield.
What is your question?
So, the question, Mr. Speaker, I have is on page 2, number 2, sick leave at the rate of four hours per pay period. Now, earlier, there was a bill that was passed, our good senator from Jotunya, Bill 50-38, and it said that, that bill says payments while being re-employed in the government of Guam shall occur sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam.
So, I was just wondering, what is the sick leave per pay period compared, in this one, in his bill, compared to active employees of the government of Guam? Are you willing to yield to the question, Senator Bora?
I don't know. You know, Mr. Speaker, the, you know, the proposal of this was based on what the current teachers accrue, because it's not necessarily, you know, at least the guidance from GDOE was that it's not the same. I don't know, and I could get that, get that answer from, for the senator from Timoting if she, you know, we'd like to recess, and I go find that out.
Senator from Jotunya?
Point of information, the law that was passed says, sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam. They shall accrue in the same manner as active employees. That's all it says.
One minute recess.
No.
Back in session. Senator Bora?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a question to the author of the legislation. He said, if he should yield.
What is your question?
So, the question, Mr. Speaker, I have is on page 2, number 2, sick leave at the rate of four hours per pay period. Now, earlier, there was a bill that was passed, our good senator from Jotunya, Bill 50-38, and it said that, that bill says payments while being re-employed in the government of Guam shall occur sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam. So, I was just wondering, what is the sick leave per pay period compared, in this one, in his bill, compared to active employees of the government of Guam?
Are you willing to yield to the question, Senator Bora?
I don't know. You know, Mr. Speaker, the, you know, the proposal of this was based on what the current teachers accrue, because it's not necessarily, you know, at least the guidance from GDOE was that it's not the same. I don't know, and I could get that, get that answer from, for the senator from Timoting if she, you know, we'd like to recess, and I go find that out.
Senator from Jotunya?
Point of information, the law that was passed says, sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam. They shall accrue in the same manner as active employees. That's all it says.
One minute recess.
No.
Back in session. Senator Bora?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a question to the author of the legislation. He said, if he should yield.
What is your question?
So, the question, Mr. Speaker, I have is on page 2, number 2, sick leave at the rate of four hours per pay period. Now, earlier, there was a bill that was passed, our good senator from Jotunya, Bill 50-38, and it said that, that bill says payments while being re-employed in the government of Guam shall occur sick leave benefits in the same manner as active employees of the government of Guam. They shall accrue in the same manner as active employees. That's all it says.
One minute recess.
No.
Back in session. Senator Bora?